The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Troop. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Triplet. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Vollmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnoldwitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Triplet. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Vollmer. Alderman Wessels. Alderman Rhodey. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Twenty present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by my pastor and also the pastor of the Alderwomen from the sixth, Reverend Sammy Jones of Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church.
Let us prepare our hearts and minds as we share with that great God that we love and that we respect. Now, Father in our God, your word teaches us that it is incumbent upon each of us to pray for our elected officials, those who have oversight over the governing of our city. We pray now that you would bless each and every one, every man, every woman. Give them wisdom and insight that they may be able to govern and to deal with the complex and integral decisions that they have to make, that the people in the city of the city of St. Louis might be blessed. Lord, I pray that you give them insight and wisdom and that from our mayor to our president of all the aldermen to each aldermanic person of this body and to every staff member who has charge of doing whatever is given, that you guide them, that they may do it to your glory. And when that is done, every person will be blessed. In the name of Jesus, our Savior, and those who believe in other ways, we pray that your love and your guidance will be there with us now and forevermore.
We'll spend with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolution calendar. I move for adoption of a... Hold on a second. Would the marshals, please get... Mr. Matthews, are you a guest of anyone on this floor? You're a guest of his? We have seating for the guests and I would prefer you not to come on this part of the floor. You can go over here or you can go over there, but do not make your way through these desks. We've had that talk before the meeting started and I'm not going to have a lot of patience with you today. You understand that?
Yes, sir.
All right, well then, have your seat over here. We will spend... Marshals, no, that is not... You can come over here, Ms. Matthews. Come right over here to these seats. You can come over to these seats or you can exit the chambers. No, there's a chair over here for you. Yeah, bring the chairs over here. You're not the alderman of the 27th ward and I don't want to see you sitting in his desk Spend with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolution calendar, move for adoption of our courtesy resolution calendar, and attain a second on that motion. Seconded by the alderman from the 12th. Alderman from the first, would you like to approach the dais and anyone else who's working on the prostate cancer resolution? Alderman from the third, would you like to approach the dais also? who was out front on health issues in general and in prostate cancer in particularly, it And Alderman from the fourth, and I think the alderman from the 24th also is working on the prostate cancer awareness resolution, would you like to approach the dais for that? is an honor to stand here this morning with the prostate cancer group to talk about prostate If you guys remember, Alderman Carter used to take this resolution up every year in cancer and the awareness of prostate cancer and how prostate cancer can be controlled honor of all of the prostate survivors and to bring light to the prostate cancer awareness if identified in a timely manner. movement that was started by Melvi Shaheed in the city of St. Louis. It is unbelievable that the technology that we have today, many people and especially So, this year, we're moving on with it and anyone else that would like to join us up here, please feel free to join us up here for this presentation. young black males are hesitant to go and to get their prostate and colorectal examinations which are critical. I am very happy and very saddened to replace Greg and presenting this award to this group When you think about the unnecessary and excessive debt that is occurring of young black males in the general population where we have no control of, like the three young males who died or were injured, the two males on the Grand Vitac, this is an area where we do have some control and that we can make a difference. And I think that we should try hard to make a difference in the lives of black males in particular and males in general. So, with your permission, Mr. President, I would like to recognize the effort that we have here today and try and make sure that we can create an environment where all males, black and white, will feel comfortable going and getting their prostate examined. I know my doctor, Dr. Bullock, and I don't need to give him no reprimand. No, 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 no kudos, but I knocked his door down. He told me, he told me, "You don't need to come back until next year, you have a 0.1 number." And I was very happy at my age to have that kind of a number, but I work hard to make sure that I keep it at that rate and I hope that all males take ownership of that, Mr. Alderman Moore, and I know Alderman Kennedy wants to say something, and also Alderman Ogilvy, did you want to say something? Alderman Moore.
Good morning. About a year ago, I was at the Antioch Baptist Church in my ward and they were doing a prostate cancer check and I was frightened to death. I've been frightened of getting the exam by any means, so I always avoided it, but Melvin Shaheed walked up to me and told me, "Brother, you need to go get your prostate checked." I walked around the side of the building and I decided not to, but then I turned around and came back and I went and got it and I was sweating bullets all the way until the time they sent me my prognosis and it was absolutely excellent and I'm glad I did so I don't have to walk around wondering. And if I'd had it, I think it would have been a great idea for me to catch it in advance so that that way I could get myself treated. So, I advise all of us in this room, not just blacks, it works on all of us. So, let's get our prostate checked. Thank you.
You know, the story that comes to mind for me is the story of my wife's grandfather, who is still with us today because he was diagnosed early on with prostate cancer and he was able to be treated and so he's, you know, still a member of our family. We still get to enjoy his presence and, you know, we're obviously grateful for the awareness that allowed him to get tested and treated in a timely manner. And as a younger fellow, I think the message is for people in my age demographic to, you know, become accustomed to the screening so that these things don't sneak up on us and we never get tested until it's too late. So, I'd like to, you know, welcome and offer our gratitude for what the folks behind me here have done in St. Louis to raise awareness on the topic. So, thank you very much.
My family also has a long history with prostate cancer. My father is a survivor, so, you know, my mother's always told us to get tested, get tested regularly. You know, when you're growing up as a kid, especially if you're a male, you're taught not to go to the doctor. They say, "Just be tough, just tough your way through it." But we need to begin to tell our young folks and make sure the message is loud and clear. You cannot tough your way through these things. It's important that you go get regular testing, whether it's for prostate cancer or whatever. Make sure to go to the doctor because your health is the number one thing and it's important that we begin to change the message to the kids from here on out that it's absolutely a necessity. You're not weak because you go to the doctor, you're smart because you go to the doctor. All of the brothers behind me in the blue tines, I believe they're all survivors, all survivors, so let's give them a round of applause. Melvi, on behalf of the Board of Aldermen in the city of St. Louis, this resolution is the highest honor that the Board has to give anyone. And that's why we pause in our normal course of business, we pause in our deliberation to honor someone or to honor an organization. And what it does, it cements in time some of your many contributions on behalf of not just the city of St. Louis, but the things that you guys are doing is a ripple effect that'll carry all across the United States. I cannot wait till the day when I go out on the streets and when we're doing the prostate cancer awareness, we see the biggest crowds out there as we see during the Susan B. Coleman time. And we're going to get there. So, on behalf of the Board of Aldermen in the city of St. Louis, we honor you, we thank you for what you've done, this cements in time some of your many contributions. So, 100, 200 years from now, when they research the records of the city of St. Louis, they'll read about the brothers here and they'll read about you and they'll know that you passed this way and you made a significant contribution to the awareness of prostate cancer. So, thank you.
Good morning, Board of Aldermen and Alderwomen. It is an honor and it's my pleasure to be among such honorable servants as those of you here today. My name is Brother Melvi Shaheed and I'm a prostate cancer survivor, a prostate cancer advocate, and a proud servant to cancer victims throughout the city of St. Louis, the founder and the CEO of the Empowerment Network. Here this morning, as our Honorable President said, these are all prostate cancer survivors. I'm here this morning to announce to city government that September is National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. So, today is the celebration for prostate cancer survivors throughout the city of St. Louis and really throughout our nation. I want to thank the Honorable President Barack Obama for issuing a proclamation from the White House announcing this month as a month to promote awareness for prostate cancer survivors and to remember those who have lost their lives to this insidious disease. Currently in the U.S., there are over 2 million men now that are surviving prostate cancer. Yes, men are living a lot longer with this disease, but many men with prostate cancer live in silence, they live in shame, they live in disgrace, they live in fear, they live in anger, they live in bitterness, and many of them live in total isolation. Many of these men are single men without a loving wife and without a loving caregiver and these men need support. Now, what our great city has, our great city has what most cities don't have in the urban community. We have the first support group for men battling prostate cancer right here in the city of St. Louis and that alone, I think, deserves our applause. Our support group is made up of over 200 survivors and we're here to help to improve the quality of life for prostate cancer survivors and their families. The Empowerment Network is helping to lift the shame of this disease. You know, but this morning, you know, I was on my way down here, I just had, you know, it was kind of tough for me really because my friend ain't here. Most of you know how close Alderman Greg Carter was to our organization. For the last four years of me coming down here, Greg would always be right here. I mean, I've got many, many pictures with Greg standing right here. I want to thank the Carter family, I want to thank my Honorable President right here for giving us the opportunity to just come down here to tell you that early detection is the best protection. Early detection saved my life, early detection saved most of the lives of the men here standing behind me, or saved all the lives of the men standing here behind me. So, I want to thank you again and happy September National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month.
It's a long time, that'll do for the purposes. And Chief Veterinarian, you've got to talk.
Director, I don't know. I can say it's a veterinarian.
Are we ready? Good morning. Appreciate your pause in our deliberations today to recognize our own St. Louis Zoo. We all know how great the zoo is and how we enjoy going there for free, but sometimes we don't understand all of the things that the zoo does in order to, for animal conservation and animal welfare. And last week, the zoo received from the American Zoological Association, known as the AZA, they received the equivalent of two Grammys, or maybe it would be, what's the other one other than the Grammys? Two Emmys, from the AZA for their work in animal conservation. And I just want to mention this morning that they were so surprised to receive two of the top three awards and they received the award for the propagation, head start, and conservation program of the Ozark Hellbender. This is the top AZA and the most historic award of the AZA and this is for their truly significant captive propagation effort that enhances the conservation of a species. And they also received the 2012 International Conservation Award for the Greavy Zebra Trust and the AZA. It's a model of collaborative endangered species conservation program and it recognizes exceptional efforts towards habitat preservation, species restoration, and support of biodiversity in the wild. And I think these are two very, very significant awards and we don't often think about the zoo maybe in all of their scientific efforts. So, we're here today to recognize Dr. Eric Miller, who is veterinarian, the chief veterinarian for the St. Louis Zoo and also the Senior Vice President and their Wild Care Institute for these two awards. So, I hope that you will join me as we present this resolution to the St. Louis Zoo and Dr. Eric Miller for their work in animal conservation. So, Dr. Miller, would you like to say a word or two? We present you the resolution.
Thank you. We'd just like to thank the Board of Aldermen on behalf of Martha Fisher and Jeff Etling, who had these programs, on behalf of our 314 full-time employees that work in the city. We're proud to be part of the city. We think these two programs are really a good point to show that conservation happens right here in Missouri and it also happens overseas. So, thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 16th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I have to make a special recognition. Eric used to be my neighbor in Dogtown and I was so impressed when I learned that donors would pay for him to go to countries that had just gone to war because when they go to war, the first thing they abandon is the zoo and they will leave the animals to starve. So, I have to let everyone know that Eric has done a fabulous job for the city of St. Louis, the zoo. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I also want to just thank you and congratulate you. I know my kids, myself, we all enjoy the zoo so much and I don't know how many people have had an opportunity to do a behind-the-scenes tour of the zoo, but when you do and you find out all of the science that's going on there, it's just amazing, just like the Alderwoman talked about. So, again, congratulations, job well done, and it's good for St. Louis to be on the map for something as positive as this. Alderman from the 14th, would you like to approach the dais?
Good morning, President Reed. Good morning, President Reed and fellow Aldermen. I have before me a resolution recognizing St. John the Baptist Elementary School on Delore Avenue that's in my ward. Nancy Hazelhorst is the principal and Chris Whitley, who submitted a grant for the Nature Unfolds to the Missouri Department of Conservation. The grant was awarded to St. John the Baptist for them to rehabilitate a lot that was the result of tearing down one of the antiquated buildings that was part of the parish center. In their efforts, they replanted this lot, made an ecosystem, and I believe the students were taught a lesson in nature conservancy and how this all works to influence the quality of life. They also worked with businesses in the area and they united the community to keep the garden going through the drought this summer. I would like to recognize their efforts and commend them for adding to the quality of life in the Bevo neighborhood. At this time, I would like my fellow Aldermen to recognize their efforts and applaud them and submit to them the resolution to be at their school. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Hazelhorst, Principal of St. John the Baptist.
Thank you very, very much. It's an honor to be here today and to receive this award. I think that education is so vitally important to our community. We try to provide for our children in South St. Louis a quality education. This was something new and rather creative and innovative for us to do, to create this outdoor garden, but we could not have done it without the help of the grants and the business community. So, we appreciate their efforts and it's an ongoing project. The drought made it very difficult to survive the summer, but it's still alive and we hope for it to keep growing so that we can continue to give our students interesting lessons in nature and conservation. So, again, we are honored to be here and thank you very, very much.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Also want to congratulate Principal and Ms. Whitley for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you because you're teaching the kids something that a lot of times, especially living in the urban core, you don't get an opportunity to learn. And all of the science behind gardening and planting and everything else is just amazing. So, thank you. Thank you for the job well done.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye. Posed. That will turn our regular order of business, introduction of our guest. Alderwoman from the 15th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to introduce today as my special guest, prosecuting attorney Rachel Smith, Community Affairs Bureau. Thank you, Rachel, for all you do and her two lovely children, Sam and Waverly Smith. Welcome to the Board of Aldermen.
Welcome. Alderman from the 12th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to introduce today's my special guest, Demetrius Alfred from Local 73.
Alderman from the 3rd?
Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to introduce as my special guest today, Gary Otten, who's here for Wendell Harris of the Painters Union that has always been very supportive, particularly to Christmas parties in the 3rd ward where we gave away hundreds of bicycles to children who otherwise would never have gotten a brand-new bicycle and I just want to thank them so very much.
Thank you. Thank you because you're teaching the kids something that a lot of times, especially living in the urban core, you don't get an opportunity to learn. And all of the science behind gardening and planting and everything else is just amazing. So thank you. Thank you for the job well done. It's been moved to second that we adopt our courtesy resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. That will turn our regularity business introduction of our guest. All the women from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to introduce today as my special guest, prosecuting attorney Rachel Smith, Community Affairs Bureau. Thank you, Rachel, for all you do and her two lovely children, Sam and Waverly Smith. Welcome to the Board of Aldermen.
Welcome. Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to introduce today as my special guest, Demetrius Alfred from Local 73.
Alderman from the 3rd.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to introduce as my special guest today, Gary Otten, who's here for Wendell Harris of the Painters Union that has always been very supportive, particularly at the Christmas parties in the 3rd ward where we gave away hundreds of bicycles to children who otherwise would never have gotten a brand-new bicycle and I just want to thank them so very much.
Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Ronnie Hour.
Alderman from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board. I would like to have as my special guest today, David Holmes with the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, and Steve Spreck, who's with the Communication Workers, and also my constituent up here, the Sherpa.
Alderman from the 13th.
Thank you, President, members of the Board. I'd like to introduce my very good friend, former colleague down here at the Board of Aldermen, Alderman Jimmy Matthews.
Alderman from the 23rd.
Yes, I'd like to recognize as my special guest, Al from the Firefighters and Frank Co. Cullen.
Any further discussion? Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, you're recognized. Recognize the clue.
I am without a guest today, but as we gather here on September 21st, this is the last day of summer, so as I said, the humpty dumpty, we're wishing you a great fall. Thank you.
With dispensal line item 5, report to city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Aldermen's mailboxes.
Dispensal line items 7 through 10, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 165, sponsored by Alderman Triplett and ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended and restated redevelopment agreement for 1601 South Jefferson Project Area 1 between the City and Green Street Development Group containing a severability clause. Board Bill 166, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance pertaining to a 99-year lease with the City and Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission and pertaining to the simultaneous swap of certain property on Shreve, which is currently being used by the City Street Department. Board Bill 167, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard and ordinance authorizing the execution of a master redevelopment agreement by and among the city, Boll District Investors and Northside Regeneration containing a severability clause. Board Bill 168, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Public Safety to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance to fund the Justice Assistance Grant Program containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 169, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and ordinance pertaining to impeding and interfering with pedestrian and vehicular traffic containing a severability clause, a penalty clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 170, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from C Multiple Family Dwelling District to the H Area Commercial District in City Block 5035 for property at 3930 McPherson containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 171, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and ordinance pertaining to secondhand dealers containing a penalty clause, severability clause, and an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first readings. To the Housing Committee, Board Bills 165, 167, and 170; to the Transportation Committee, Board Bill 166; to the Public Safety Committee, Board Bills 168 and 171; and to the Streets Committee, Board Bill 169. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
Following board bills were reported out of Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill 124, sponsored by Alderman Orpman and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2416 McNair containing a severability clause. Board Bill 125, sponsored by Alderman Orpman and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3224 through 26 Michigan containing a severability clause. Board Bill 126, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3927 through 3929 Shannon Door containing a severability clause. Board Bill 127, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3661 Shannon Door containing a severability clause. Board Bill 130, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3953 through 65 Le Cleed containing a severability clause. Board Bill 131, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4401 through 55 Shoto containing a severability clause. Board Bill 134, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1300 through 04 Dolman containing a severability clause. That's the extent of second readings.
Dispensal line items 14 through 19 and line items 21, 22 miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements?
Friday full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcement.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from 13th, you're recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to excuse the Alderman from the 6th ward due to necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from 13th, second by Alderman from 12th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Alderman from 13th, you're recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, 10:00 a.m.
Moved by Alderman from 13th, second by Alderman from 11th. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. We stand adjourned.